At this time, I'd like to call the regular board meeting to order of the Adams Friendship Area School District. If we could all arrive for a pleasure.
My pleasure. Ladies and gentlemen, to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. As meeting's power to those.
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you. Um, there's a motion to adopt the agenda.
One second.
Motion to be made by Jim to talk about Joanne to adopt today's agenda discussion. Hearing none, so just vote with Joanne.
Yes.
Ken.
Yes.
Jim.
Yes.
Lena.
Yes.
Kathy.
Yes.
Melissa.
Yes.
Ryan? Oh, Ryan is excused. Jeff?
Yes, sir.
And my board of directors passes a eight zero. Board of Education recognition. I guess I'll start because we're going to have a board retreat on July 22nd, five to possibly eight o'clock. I know it will be a cross for time, but you can try and. Jeff? Um, but we'll have it over in the conference room at the Frank Center, at the Frank Center. If that room is available, assuming you expect.
Yes.
With that, anybody else have anything for the board?
Um, I went with, sorry.
Go ahead.
With our Spanish club to Puerto Rico a couple of weeks ago. Um, we have four girls go and they were phenomenal representatives to our school district. We had lots of fun. It's a good time to enjoy that moment. How's the reconstruction going there? It actually looked really well. Um, you can see that we have mentioned the devastation still in some places, especially of education, but everybody seemed to be sheltered.
Jeff?
I attended last month, uh, state FFA convention. My first time, I would highly recommend it if you've never been there. Um, awesome. And another way to explain it, um, the kids pretty much run the show. Um, very professional, we were well represented. Um, we won quite a few awards. A lot of them got their certification. Um, a great program. It really dovetails into the needs of our students. Um, and I like the philosophy where they've actually, it's not just about farming. It's about leadership and promoting those qualities within our students so they are future leaders. And, you know, that's what we need, so.
Do we send students to the national factory?
Yes.
Pretty much annually?
Oh, yes. Oh, yeah, there's usually, I think there's a handful of usually they go there every year. I don't count me and my son, and he has American degrees, so this is.
Anyone else?
I, I know a lot of you went, but that Fourth of July parade I felt was very well done and our school represents real well. The bands are always a highlight and, you know, it's just so wonderful to see a small town parade, you know, and, you know, the pride that goes in it.
Anyone else? There was no public comment, so I'll consider the jury to close section.
So moved.
Jeff? Motion to be made by Jeff to talk about Joanne. Consider your jury. A jury into closed section of section nineteen point eight five one C, considering employment promotion compensation or performance evaluation data of any public employee with a government or body of jurisdiction exercise in responsibility to contract issue to consult. Discussion. Hearing none, so just vote with Ken.
Yes.
Jim.
Yes.
Lena.
Yes.
Kathy.
Yes.
Melissa.
Yes.
Jeff.
Yes.
Joanne.
Yes.
And my board of directors passes a eight zero. We'll be back shortly. We'll just. At this time, I'm moving on to consent agenda. Is there a motion?
So.
Motion to be made by Melissa, to talk about Jim to adopt the consent agenda. On the consent agenda tonight, there is, um, the mint meeting, the meeting minutes, um, co-curricular hires. Um, nope, there is no co-curricular hires. That's been scratched until points. Um, a higher recognition for Samantha Radke, elementary school guidance counselor. A higher recognition for Laura Duggan, director of curriculum instruction. Higher recognition for Ashley, oh boy, Arden. Argen, speech and language therapy. She might need to help me. At least with names anyways. Um, higher recognition for Elizabeth Camhouse, second grade teacher at AFP. Higher recognition for Kelsey Coen-Jackman.
I'm Chaney.
What?
Chaney.
Chaney. That's her job, we built that. Um, high school guidance counselor. Um, higher recognition for Ke- Kena Miles, there, I can get that one. First of all, the case teacher AFP. A resignation from Stacy Endicott, high school guidance. Resignation of Kara Taylor, teacher AFP. Relegation of Vernon Reinhardt. Relegation of Cassley Maloney, medical health coordinator.
Alyssa.
Alyssa, I'm sorry, Alyssa.
And Laura is in the audience, it's actually Laura Duggan, like Duggan.
Like the show.
That was the show.
All right, um, here's our discussion. Hearing none, we'll start this vote with Jim.
Yes.
Lena.
Yes.
Kathy.
Yes.
Melissa.
Yes.
Jeff.
Yes.
Joanne.
Yes.
Ken.
Yes.
And my board of directors passes a eight zero. Um, should I be the speaker or reporter?
I will be brief, but I would like to talk a little bit at each meeting if that is agreeable. And I just wanted to talk a little bit about what I've been doing with the staff that I've been connecting with. And, uh, hopefully you guys noticed that I had some hardware in front of me, uh, this year, and I want to talk about each of these things. Uh, first of all, I've got a fastener, they used to be brass fasteners, but those are too expensive to make and sell now. So it's a little metal fastener and, uh, I've given one of these out to a staff member so far. And I will give these out to people that are good at connecting others and making connections with others. Um, the other thing I have, one of the other things I have is a pulley. And pulleys are designed to make things easier, make work and life easier for people. And I know this is a little bit corny and probably a little unusual for, for some of you, but, um, I've given one pulley out to a staff member, uh, who's helped another staff member, uh, get work done this summer. So I'll be giving pulleys out to people. And then the final thing that I have so far is a wing nut. And I have a wing nut because I gave a wing nut to, uh, members of our administrative team. Uh, I always want, and more question, and ask our staff to think differently. And I'm going to ask the same of the board as we move into the future. Uh, please ask questions. We know stone unturned, have crazy ideas, uh, because the only way we're going to grow and move forward is if we think a little bit differently. That's it.
That's good. Thank you.
Thank you.
Finance committee, Joanne.
Okay. Finance committee, met at six thirty. And on behalf of the finance committee, I want to approve general fund checks number eight zero eight six two through eight one zero five six, and ACH checks number nine zero zero three one eight through nine zero zero three five eight, and two five two five through two five four six, totaling one million, six hundred thirteen thousand, six hundred eighty seven dollars and seventeen cents. Activity fund checks number three zero seven five zero through three zero seven eight nine, and ACH check number one one two nine totaling thirty four thousand, six hundred forty four dollars and nine cents. One building fund payment of two hundred thirty five thousand, twenty nine dollars, and one debt service fund payment of fifty one dollars and fifty three cents for the month of June.
Is there a second? Jim? Motion to be made by Joanne, anybody, Jim, for bill general fund checks number eight zero eight six two through eight one zero five six, and ACH checks number nine zero zero three one eight through nine zero zero three five eight, and twenty five through twenty, twenty five, twenty five through twenty five, forty six for a month of June, for one two million, six hundred thirteen thousand, six hundred eighty seven dollars and seventeen cents. Activity fund checks number three zero seven five zero through three zero seven eight nine, and one ACH check number eleven twenty nine for a month of June, for thirty four thousand, six hundred forty four dollars and nine cents. One building fund payment, two hundred thirty five thousand, twenty nine dollars, and one debt service fund payment of fifty one fifty three. Discussion. Hearing none, we'll start this vote with Lena.
Yes.
Kathy.
Yes.
Melissa.
Yes.
Jeff.
Yes.
Joanne.
Yes.
Ken.
Yes.
Jim.
Yes.
And my board is yes. Passes a eight zero.
Okay, and the next item on the agenda was the revenue limit and equalization agreement. Was presented by Ryan.
Anything else?
Nope, that's all.
Can I just ask a question? Um, with the mill rate, weren't we told the lower it gets from ten, the more, um, difficulty it gets for us? Okay, and now we're in the eights, right?
Well, no, it's projected to be in the sevens.
Seven point eight five.
Seven point eight five.
And again, that's the, the function of the, the double negative of the school funding program. And unfortunately, Adams Friendship is, is in that double negative right now. So we are, we're declining enrollment school districts, so we're receiving less money based on headcount on an annual basis. And as we receive less money for the students we serve, it appears that we have more and more property value behind each of the students that we do serve. So the double negative is we're, we're generating less revenue based on headcount, and our citizens are funding a larger percentage of what it takes to operate the school district on an annual basis. And we're a tertiary school district, so we actually give back a little bit of every dollar that we spend because we have so much property value behind each of the students we serve.
With this meeting you're attending, does it appear that anything will change?
The other thing I wanted to say is, is, is there's going to be a lot of talk in the news over the next month about, uh, the governor's budget proposal and where we are with that. And I've been asked to speak at a, a panel in the cross in early August about school finance and what the funding formula means for districts like ours, like Adams Friendship. Um, I, I don't know if there's going to be immediate change, but there are too many school districts like ours across the state, uh, to not necessarily be heard over time.
Thank you.
With that, we'll go into business for 4K renewal unlimited agreement. I believe the reason why this is on our agenda, then even though there is, if you read through it, there it says that it, um, renews itself if we don't tell them by May first, but, um, because of the change in, um, the superintendent, we wanted to update the contract with the correct people involved. And that's really the only change that we're trying to. So we're looking for a motion to, um, approve this contract.
I'm going to approve the contract for renewal unlimited for the twenty nineteen, twenty twenty program agreement.
Motion to be made by Kathy, taken by Jim for the, um, 4K renewal unlimited agreement for twenty nineteen, twenty twenty. Um, discussion. One of the discussions then would be is next year, unless we want to get out of it by May first, it's, you won't see it on the agenda next year, it's just going to roll over. Go ahead, Jeff.
I'm going to say I hope that we see it on the agenda next year, um, remembering what I said last year. Um, these are, I mean, we just talked about how our aid is going down. This is money that is not flowing per se into the district. We're paying somebody to do a service that potentially that we could provide, um, if we design the correct program to do it. Um, we don't look at lowing for, this is lowing for potentially that we need to look at.
One of the issues with 4K funding in the state of Wisconsin is that regardless of the amount of time that you educate students, you can only recruit sixty seven percent per child. Uh, so in my previous school district, uh, we felt that the need was great. It was so great that we funded full day 4K, uh, four days a week, and, uh, took a loss on that decision from a financial perspective, but we believe over time that it helped make gains in student progress. So something that I'd like to think about as well.
Any comments or discussion? Hearing none, we'll start this vote with Kathy.
Yes.
Melissa.
Yes.
Jeff.
Yes.
Joanne.
Yes.
Ken.
Yes.
Jim.
Yes.
Lena.
Yes.
And my board of directors passes a eight zero. High school student handbook. Yes, please.
All right, so Nick and I had a chance to meet and go through some changes. We have a change at the administration level of the high school. Um, so when you look through it, anything highlighted in yellow will be an addition. Anything highlighted red will be taken out or replaced by something in yellow. Um, and then the thing will change at the end once approved is the table of contents. We'll add, uh, things in there and some formatting changes. So as we go down, this, uh, section was taken out because of the change in board policy, progression policy. So there is no longer an attendance requirement for seniors. Then, um, we're taking the truant safety scroll down, we'll just see. There's a grid that we used to have for many years for the last dozen years or so, that we decided to take out. Um, I just added some bullet points as we change. One change we're going to have is an attendance team that meets weekly, uh, to discuss anybody, any student that is meeting, insurance required is by law, so. Um, and then a plan will be made with that attendance team. Mr. Stormin, uh, social worker, and Zach Roberts, our school research officer, we need him in all attendance as, as needed. The first little highlight there is just our procedure we use with TARDIS, um, just staff rather than yours, modern TARDIS, monitoring TARDIS. And then we have the same similar change where we're taking over the grid and just adding bullet points to, um, simplify and make a little more question. And then here we're just, uh, can we find that our newer teachers, I would say, especially, um, all teachers need to know, and students need to know what's happening with the cell phone policy. Um, and, and not just the cell phone policy, but also the, uh, baby. Uh, it's been a newer trend over the last couple of years here, and we're finding more and more of it, so. Um, well, with any cigarette or baby device or tobacco offense, we'll have discipline further enough, which is what we've been doing. Uh, and now we're just putting in, uh, second and third offenses, so we're, um, turning off. Our referrals a lot more, so that doesn't always mean citation, it just means that he's been, we usually work in conjunction with him to determine the appropriate consequence. Last year, and still the community service component through the school before he got to, to a citation level. So, um, we're trying to do things to combat it, but it is, it is challenging. Zach works closely with the drug freedom community group, so, um, we're getting some resources there as well. We're just taking out some language here, uh, because with our attendance additions of above referrals, and that's how we're going to monitor, use a review through system, we'll monitor, uh, the excuse addresses, so we're trying to separate the behavior from, from attendance. And, um, if you have one excuse to address, you're not going to get a, uh, discipline referral, so it, it just don't meet where our, where our expectations are. And this is just taking out, it was in there twice it was ever done, and so we're just adding to our cell phone policy below, um, adding in that they can be used for strictly educational purposes in the classroom with permission of the teacher. Um, so that's something we, Nick and I also met with the school group and team to talk about some changes to what they, what they needed from the handbook as well, and we changed what they saw. So this one, um, came, came there just giving teachers again permission to say, no, you can't use your cell phone. And students need to know that it is strictly with the permission of the teachers right now is, um, is tough to control cell phones in classrooms. So it's just there to support teachers and then maybe also working on the office then.
And this kind of spells out the procedure, the, the having issues, the teachers having issues. And this just fills out, um, the consequence of how it's going to be filed, if the teacher takes it away or the teacher requests it, when the student's going to get it back. Just spell it out for them so they know, they, they know it's, uh, they do it.
Schools used to have this years ago when cell phones first came out, and then it got taken away because there's some legal issues and it's, well, let's use them as a tool in the classroom. Now we're one-on-one, so there's no reason for a student to have a cell phone in the classroom. Um, on glass, again, there might be a time, if there's, uh, an interesting project or something, that's, the teacher can come up with, we don't want to say you can't use it, but this is just limiting the, the use, it's not part of the teacher's classroom curriculum.
Given that statement, teachers may request that a cell phone from a student is self-owned, may request?
It should, okay, yep, it should say, may request a cell phone.
So they may request that a cell phone be given to them?
Yep.
Okay. Is there any, knowing my background?
Yep.
I could ask for a cell phone, it may not be given to me, so what happens then?
Then they'll call the office, and it's part of that.
Okay. That sentence just has to.
Right now, just cleaning up the, uh, taking backpacks out of clothing appropriate for school, which it was in, and making it its own, um, section of the handbook. And then adding in the, the second part, skirt shorts and shirts with plaid, it must be mid thigh, mid thigh is pretty, uh, hard to monitor. So we're just saying, putting up with the other rule, uh, all above, uh, bags, maybe it's English, but I'm sure I'm going to show you. So just putting up the language there. Backpacks was a rule we put in last year, uh, we did purchase clear backpacks and we offered most of the students that they need one. The only students that should have a backpack in the building and carry it around are students with a medical necessity. So our backpack students are locked and carried backpacks with, uh, things and things. And just an added PDA, which is always fun to deal with. Nick will enjoy that this year. And, um, in school suspension expectations, so we, our Alec Room, Alter Learning Assessment Center, uh, Mrs. Kelly, Donna Kelly's in that room. She's going to be now, uh, moving as a paraprofessional into our personalist EBD classroom that was approved a few months ago. So, um, we don't have the supervisor for Alec anymore, so we've also, one other thing that's been implemented since Alec was implemented is behavior support and academic support in specialized classroom. So we're using that for specialized students. If there's a regular student that needs a break, um, that's what we're missing right now, what we think we will work with teachers to, um, help, get help from the administration office, but also, um, use the office area as a place if the student is in there in closed cooldown, that's where they can go if the student is in there to take a test, they can use the library immediately. So it's the plan to replace Alec. And then I'm just moving public disclosure section up into the student conduct.
Will your care professionals then be the ones that will receive any suspension, their center?
No, we're going to try staff on front for that duty.
Oh, okay, so staff will work, your administrative secretary is in the office.
They will, yeah, we, in rare cases, that may happen if we don't have staff available because of subject need or something like that. But, um, we've used that, we've done that before, one of the studies, but, uh, we'll accomplish it in places that we can, um, have the students in the area on supervisors.
That's why it was good to clear up those expectations, so it's a different teacher each hour that there's that clear set, they know I have to put under those expectations.
And then vehicles as school grounds is just a procedural thing for us. Um, we get students parking all over the place for different events. Uh, if they're in a sport and they are open gym, they might come to the back of the building and just park along there, it clogs it up. Or during school days, if they're going on a, uh, field trip, they might park in other areas because they're the first ones in the building. So this is just saying that when they're parked, when the students parked in the, uh, at school, they should be in a student park.
I have a question at all to cut down on parking permit.
Sure.
I don't know why we actually charge kids for that parking permit. There's no law enforcement for that. We're not enforcing that. I would rather give them a permit so we know who's parking there just in case something would happen, or if we're doing a drug dog search, you know, and then you know who that is for. But to charge them that knowledge, I really have no enforcement for that. I don't, I mean, I've heard kids leave the high school, they just pass their parking permit down to the next kid, so.
We, we find those, um, when we have it, usually through a doctor, so that's when we're going through law enforcement. Uh, we're hoping that the city with Officer Schley, that we'll have more enforcement of the lot than we've had in the past. So we haven't had the support, um, from whatever.
Go ahead, Jeff.
I can tell you, just, you know, uh, sitting on sales points, it's fifty bucks a semester. Um, and it is regularly ticketed and controlled net, but that money is also segregated as far as just for improvements on the lot itself.
And that's what I feel.
Because you can designate those funds so that when we seal COVID or whatever, you're building that money up.
I, which I like that idea, I'm just thinking that, I'll bet you just said that we'd never have law enforcement support to write a ticket there. We had asked before, when we first started doing that, if I, if I correct you. So that's a problem. I just can't see making kids pay ten dollars if we're never going to enforce it, but if that's going to happen, then I'd be like the customer this year and see what happens.
The only cost to us, unless we did something where we. The only cost to us, unless we did something where we can work that money, is the cost of the tag itself, which, when I'm writing about the past, not here, is about a dollar, a dollar fifty per tag.
Sorry, cool, and kind of on your way to your point.
So again, the only thing that would change after this, I'll take about that one wording change. I'll take that.
I think the WDKM for the radio and climate weather, that's not WDKM.
Oh, yeah, that changes. Athletic fees, just to go back to that one, because those are just two that were added in. Mr. Grochek bumped those, they were not included in the past. So dance and soccer. What page was the WDKM on?
Eighteen.
We'll fix that one as well.
Is there a way that we can add in, because I'm working on the new website?
Yep.
So that will no longer be our web address?
Yeah, we can change it. And this document we shared on the website is a live document, so we can make that change once we have it approved. And then one other change that we've talked about, we added the, you can see on the athletic code, corporate code on here. And then at the end, the signature page just says that they've had a chance to read both documents, the student book and the corporate code. So we'll get a signature, and that, those signatures are kept in the office.
Is there a parent's?
Not for this one. That'll be signed off when they register online.
Okay.
But this one, the students will have a chance to go through with their advisor. We do it in the first week of school, through the advisory program.
We guys have told that in the past, how we go ensure that happens this year?
So after, two years ago, we put that in there so that this person in the office goes through, if we don't get one, we call the student in, and then they get a conversation with me or Nick. And we'll go through with them if they, if they're refusing to sign. Otherwise, it's just making sure that they had a chance. So normally, the kids know, yeah, I was there, it signs up.
Same with the parent?
Parent one is through registration.
Okay, so. I found a typo.
All right, I worked your word.
Sorry.
Oh, that's good.
Back on page seven of the document, underneath makeup work. It says, the student is responsible for requesting and completing all makeup work from hand, is what it should say. And it says hand.
Yep. All right.
Just to say, I've really read this, and so when I sign it, this is where my children are.
That is not changed.
There's one more, but that's a lot.
Is there any other questions? Are there any motions?
I have a motion to approve the AFHS handbook.
Okay, second.
I'll second that.
Postpaid by Jim, second by Joanne, to approve the high school handbook for 2019-2020 school year. What? Go ahead, Jim.
So, when I see these kinds of things on our agenda, I take a step back. And obviously, I'm gonna draw from my prior experience. Why does this come to the board? Because it's a day-to-day operation. And I appreciate all the effort that you guys put in updating that. But there, it deals mostly with how the high schools run on the day-to-day. It references the policies that the board has already approved. So we're getting involved in the day-to-day operations of, well, maybe we, you should, instead of having that teacher do it and changing it in the policy, I think it bleeds over to what the board's responsibility is. Hire a superintendent, set a budget, provision. That's, this is beyond that. This is the day-to-day nuts and bolts of it. In my mind, I can tell you, in my prior district, this would have never hit the board, ever. Because of the simple fact, it deals with too much of the day-to-day business. And imagine trying to, in a district that size, you know, of trying to approve every handbook for every, you know, nine elementarys, a high school, two junior highs. And just, again, big board vision, me personally, I'd rather spend the time talking about our budget. That's gonna be hitting us back in the face in our next meeting. And instead of, we're gonna allow truancy and those kinds of things. We'll set the policy for that, the day-to-day and how it's administered, lead that up to the administration. Just my opinion.
Um, and I take the opposite view because I'm very happy to look at these handbooks. I think when you live in a small town and people might ask you questions, you might say, hey, if you consult your handbook, you'll find that answer. I like being aware of the changes, especially as it lines up with our policies, as we change policies, and when we see it reflected in the handbook. I don't think this is a waste of my time at all. I think it makes me feel more tied in. We don't have nine schools. We've only seen three. So I'm happy to look this over, and especially with different things like the new electronic communication devices with the E, cigarettes, et cetera. So I just take the opposite view, that I'm happy to overlook these and have any kind of discussion that comes from that.
Instead of voiding out a job, what would be better if we had an information item? Information item instead of voiding out?
Yep.
Wouldn't that work?
That way, we're not telling them how to do their job.
I agree with that.
Yep, absolutely.
So from now on, that's why I'll put that stuff on there. Okay? Any other discussions? Hearing now, we'll start with Melissa. Um, Jeff.
Yes.
Joanne.
Yes.
Ken.
Yes.
Jim.
Yes.
Leonard.
Yes.
Kathy.
Yes.
And my board, especially you all. I hope you all follow our agenda, it's the reading of students' editor. We're adjourned at 7:45. I did retreat, two weeks from tonight, final.